Okay, still waiting for. Hi, Robin. Here's Robin.
Hi, Robin.
Hello, Robin.
Hello, Robin.
Hello, Nancy.
Hi, everybody. Hi.
Just waiting for Chris. We'll be good. Hey, Sean, I have 5:30. Are you correct? We have 5:30?
I'm ready to go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council Study Session for July 27, 2020. And once again, we're conducting this meeting virtually and telephonically. As per the Governor's Emergency Proclamation, the City of Auburn is prohibited. I'm holding in the in-person meetings at this time. So until we achieve Phase Three of the Governor's Safe Start. Phase Opening Reopening Plan, we will continue to conduct these meetings virtually and telephonically. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
I am here.
Councilmember Baggett.
There.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
I am here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Thank you. Any notes?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought her Councilmember Sterns say he's here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Okay, sorry for jumping together a little bit. All right, so any announcements, reports, or presentations? All right, hearing none, we will move into our first agenda item for this evening, which is Ordinance Number 6781, and Director Tate.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember. I guess the first thing before jumping in, I just want to make sure that my audio is clear and everybody can hear. Good. If that changes, stop me, of course, and I'll back up and repeat it. It may have been missed. The first item on this agenda was in 6781. It starts in page three in your packet. I'm going to the general background of why and what this ordinance is before opening it up for discussion. So first of all, I want to make it clear that the goal in this ordinance is to provide clarity on how public property is intended to be used. There's many types of public property, and they all have an intended reason behind why we own them, why we maintain them, we invest in them, we manage them. So you have parks, streets, sidewalks, storm ponds, water reservoirs, parking lots, and buildings, and there's more. A city over years has required, developed, maintained, managed each of those properties with a specific intent. And with the exception of one campground that we have in Auburn that's located within over at Game Farm Park, the Wilderness Area, camping is not a reason for the city to buy, develop, and maintain the lands that it owns. Camping that's located outside of a formal campground presents a number of management challenges for the city. That includes inadequate sanitation facilities, no real good way to manage garbage and waste. So those types of things present some public health issues and concerns. Additionally, where camping occurs can have an impact on the environment, wetlands and rivers, things of that nature that are sensitive. It can have an impact on traffic safety, presents a view block. There can be fire safety issues because oftentimes with camping, there's like fire pits or campfires that are set up. And sometimes what I classify as creative provision of electricity. And it can challenge pedestrian access, and namely, the Americans with Disabilities Act and the pathways that are established to accommodate folks who have a need. And then there's just the general use of an area, and I'll highlight parks as an example. You know, you have ball fields, you have trails, you have picnic shelters. And of course, we, as a city, acquire those lands, we develop those lands, not in that traditional high-density kind of development, but you know, we put an investment into the land and set it up to be used for a certain reason. And if unauthorized camping gets set up in those areas, our general public and the users don't go to those facilities or can be pushed away from those facilities for their intended use. So I'll say that while camping is not an activity that, or it is an activity that any person can choose to take part of, I think clearly we need to recognize that we have members of our community that don't have a home and instead live within encampments. And sometimes those are set up in a variety of different locations throughout the city. I will say, though, that fortunately, the City of Auburn is lucky. We have lots of strong relationships and lots of services available in our community where we can provide assistance to those experiencing homelessness, since really living in a tent or an encampment is not a really humane or sustainable approach to addressing homelessness. This ordinance before council tonight for discussion really seeks to balance the preservation of public property for its intended use and to ensure that we're directing or providing support to those experiencing homelessness and who may be using public property to camp to the appropriate sheltering services or housing, food, mental health, drug addiction, employment services, all the different types of services that are offered in and around Auburn that we're connecting people through those services so that they can get out of a scenario of homelessness and into a more stable environment. And we're also lucky because we have lots of strong partnerships outside Auburn. So a lot of, whether it's Kent, Federal Way, whatever the city, we provide a wide array, all of the cities, of different kinds of services. So we all kind of lean on each other as well in the event that we don't have a specific service in Auburn or the service is full, they can't take anybody right now. So we have other partnerships that we can rely upon. I think it's important to point out that the authoring of this ordinance, this draft ordinance, was carried out in consultation with the City Attorney's Office and really also with human resources and risk management to make sure that, you know, we're honoring and carrying out what we learned out of the Ninth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals decision on Martin versus the City of Boise. And that's an important case because in the case of someone who might be experiencing homelessness and they're using public property, there's all sorts of things that we need to make sure we're doing if we're engaging with that person because they have inalienable rights to be able to sleep and, you know, in order to live. You know, those are things that we need to make sure that we're supporting the folks that we might be approaching and saying, well, you can't camp here, but we've got all these other options for you. We've got sheltering, and we'd like to make sure that we get you into a more stable scenario. And also, I am presenting tonight sort of a summary, but there's all sorts of other city staff present because the ordinance that's before you was collectively authored by the Parks Department, Community Development, Legal, Public Works, the Department of Administration, HR and Risk Management, and Police, as well as in consultation with Kent Hay, who operates out of the mayor's office as the Homeless Outreach Coordinator. And so there's representatives from each of those departments on the phone to, or in the call and in the meeting to answer any questions that may arise. And I think it's, you know, whenever we present a draft ordinance, most of the time when I'm presenting, I'm bringing forward something that's very specific to land use or the environment, like that. In this case, if you navigate through the ordinance, there are some amendments that are proposed in Chapter Two of the City Code, and Chapter Two is this section of Chapter Two deals with park regulations. There's some amendments proposed in Chapter Nine of the ordinance, which pertains to loitering and disorderly conduct. There's amendments to Chapter Twelve, which are streets and sidewalks. And then there's amendments to Chapter Thirteen, which is where you find our regulations on sewer, water, and stormwater utilities. So I'm just going to do a quick, about seven or eight bullet points, just to say what the ordinance would do in general, and then we can jump into any questions. First of all, in the Chapter 2.22 set of regulations, it just clarifies that overnight camping is not permitted in parks unless it's at a campground or if it's approved as part of an event, that the director has authority to, you know, to approve events within park property. So it could be part of that as well. It says that, you know, parks already have hours of operation, and that's generally dawn to dusk. And if anyone, whether it's camping or anything, if you're violating the hours of operation, the penalty for that is the ability, the authority to trespass anybody who is violating that law. In Chapter Nine, it strengthens the language on the prohibition to obstruct a business during their normal business hours. It prohibits camping on city-owned property, so outside of parks. And then in Chapter Twelve, there's clarified language about the prohibition of block a sidewalk. And in that case, that can yield a penalty of a ticket. And then in Chapter Thirteen, it's kind of repetitive language, but it touches on each utility. So in the water utility, you can't damage anything on a water utility property, and you can't trespass, and we have the ability to trespass and to issue a ticket if we need to. So then that language kind of repeats itself in the other three sections of that code so that it looks the same for water, for storm, and for sewer. I think it's important, from a philosophical point of view, to know that however we administer these regulations, one of the fundamental principles is, like it is with everything that we do in code enforcement and anything that we're engaged in enforcement action or telling people what the law is, is education first. It's always education first before you get into penalties and anything that's punitive. And for those who are experiencing homelessness, it is service. It is, here is what we need to do to help you in the current situation that you're in. So if you're experiencing homelessness, you know, an obvious service that we would be offering is to get you into a shelter. So one thing that's important and kind of unique, I guess, in the world of regulations is this draft ordinance basically says that if you're camping on public property, first of all, if you're camping in a park, you can't. But if you're camping in a non-park public property and we approach you and we say, you can't do that here, that's not legal, we can only take you or have you taken off that property in order to go to a shelter. And if a shelter space is not available, we probably end up having to come back the next day or do something different because that's a fundamental principle of the Martin versus Boise case is that we have to offer shelter. We can't just tell you to leave a public property and have no solutions for you. That does kind of, in effect, become a sort of criminalizing homelessness. So we can't take that approach. We don't want to take that approach. So it's important, it's an important aspect to point out that when we enforce, we have to lead with that when it comes to homelessness. And we also need to make sure that the shelter service that we're offering doesn't charge a fee. We also need to make sure that the shelter service to get there, you don't have to pay for transportation to get there. We also need to make sure that if you've got belongings, we have methods in place to secure your belongings. And there's guidance in the court case and in our practices on how to go about doing all of that. And if there are specific questions about, well, what does that look like? I think we're happy to walk through sort of a scenario if that's sort of where counsel's interest lies. So I'm going to pause. I think just in terms of making a Zoom meeting as the least chaotic possible, if questions come in, I'm probably just going to direct to Kent or to Daryl or to Ingrid or whoever the appropriate person on the call is. Just because with eight of us or whatever trying to respond, that could get pretty messy. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Hi, hi, thank you. I have a couple of questions, just. The first is about the Boise versus Martin case. And the second one is about a different case in Washington. The state of Washington versus Pippin case. So on the first one, can you just sort of give everyone, or maybe Dan can do this, just a brief rundown of what the case was about and the constitutional rights that the court dealt with?
Yeah, I think I'll actually turn it over to Doug Ruth, who's on the phone. He's the city attorney who helped shepherd us through the code update. So he's probably most familiar with all the technical details of it.
Sure, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, the Boise, Martin versus Boise decision was obviously set in Boise, Idaho. And in that city, they had criminalized all sleeping, sitting, resting on public property. And there were several individuals who actually had not been prosecuted for these violations, but who were under threat of prosecution. Some of them had attempted to get into shelter to avoid sleeping on the sidewalks, but it had been turned away over time, either because they had spent too much time in a shelter or because of their religious beliefs. And so the court took up the case, even though no one had actually been prosecuted. And the main ruling in the case regards to the Eighth Amendment, so the cruel, unusual punishment. And the court decided that not allowing or criminalizing, giving criminal punishment to people that are merely sleeping on public property where they have no other place to go is a form of cruel and unusual punishment. They looked at prior cases that dealt with criminalizing conditions such as alcoholism and such, and made an analogy to that. So that's a little bit of a background. I hope that's enough. But it was mainly based upon the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution.
Oh, thank you, Doug. Really appreciate that. And so the second question goes to, let me find this. First of all, the case is Washington versus Pippin. Not the Dickens character, but it's in the Washington Court of Appeals and was decided three years ago. And I believe it is going to be relevant to the very first change that Jeff mentioned, which is in Section One, and it talks about tents. And it says that the tent has, or shelter has to have an unobstructed view through the tent. And so what Pippin talked about, though, is that, you know, there's a right to privacy that every person has. Every person has this right to privacy, and even if you're homeless, and even if you're living in a tent, that is your castle, and you have a right to privacy. So requiring someone to not have privacy seems like that would be a violation of that decision. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, I'm not familiar with that case, though I do, I am familiar with that holding that they also have a right to privacy in courts on several, in several aspects have held that a tent can be a home for purposes of like issuing a search warrant. And maybe since that's, I recognize that it's a criminal case because it's state versus Pippin, so that very may well be the situation there that they were serving a search warrant and the court found a privacy interest there in the tent. And in this case, that you were not, we're making sure that it is an enclosed tent. I'm not sure that the court would hold the same within a park setting. I don't know. I would have to read that case. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, but I can't say whether or not it's, was it, was that in a park setting? Do you recall?
It was a public property, yeah.
And they might make a distinction between a park and whatever, a different type of property. I'm not sure. I would have to look at that opinion. I was not aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Baggett has a question?
Okay, Councilmember Baggett, go ahead.
Just kind of briefly, Jeff, what agency within the city would be the most appropriate to contact if we come across some of these individuals that might be camping out on sidewalks and in public areas? I know in the past I have contacted the police regarding certain situations, and they have taken care of them. But things like somebody placing a tent right in the middle of a sidewalk that obstructs, you know, somebody walking along that sidewalk.
So happy to answer that question, and it's a good one. So it depends upon the type of property that it's on. And that's why we don't want the public to have to figure out how to navigate the difference between a private property and a public property or a park property and a storm pond or a sidewalk. So the method of making the request for a response is, I think we'd like to funnel folks towards using C Click Fix. That's a good way. We triage that on the backend so that we get the right people involved. But frankly, not everybody's going to know that. So there's other methods to submit a report on whether that's through the code enforcement process or it's, you know, someone calling 211. There are a variety of ways that you can report something, and it's going to get to the right people. But I will tell you this. Generally speaking, if it's on a sidewalk, if it's on a utility property, if it's on a privately owned property, code enforcement tends to lead that. If it's on a park property, the Parks Department will be the ones that go out and make contact with the folks, offer the service, you know, tell them that you can't camp here. And I think that unless something bad is happening at the moment, like a crime, there's a lot of folks that can reply to that kind of inquiry before police have to show up to anything. So Kent is new. Kent Hay joined the city earlier this year, and you've had a chance to hear from him already. But Kent is part of that as well because we want to make sure that we're not just talking to the constituent who's complaining, but we need, Kent is the bridge to, you know, making sure that the homeless community has access to the services. So Kent is the one that will go out and talk to the folks living in the encampment. And he's got a police radio, so he's out there by himself. And if something, if there's an interaction that is concerning, he has quick access to the police department. But we don't always want it to be the police department showing up because that, you know, there isn't always something bad that's happening. It's just that it's homelessness and it's an encampment, and we want to change that, but it's not always a threat.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown has a question?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just two questions, I guess. One's probably easier to answer. Is there, has there been instances or patterns of behavior out in the community that has motivated us to propose these changes? And number two, do we anticipate issues related to family members, you know, keeping families together type situation?
Yeah, another couple of good questions. So I'll actually answer the second question. That's probably the easier one. When it comes to sheltering, every person's different. And if we encounter families, if that's the question you're asking, like, how do you keep a family together? There's probably seven or eight different categories of shelters that are out in the community. Not all of them are in Auburn. But whether it's family, whether it's a single female, whether it's someone who has a pet, there are different needs for different folks experiencing homelessness. So we definitely have a good network of shelters in the region that offer different types of services. And Auburn actually helps fund some of those that are outside Auburn. And I mean, that's been a question in the past before from council about funding services outside Auburn. We can't have eight different types of shelters in Auburn, but we can have one or two, and Kent can have one or two, and Federal Way can have one or two. And if we're working together, we can help people the best way possible without having, you know, forcing them to go long ways away. So there's that part. And then the first question, can you repeat it?
Yeah, was, has there been a pattern of instances that have occurred that has motivated us to propose these changes?
Yeah, we feel from a staff perspective that it's kind of an endless cycle right now of where we have interactions with folks experiencing homelessness. We go and talk to them and say, we understand you've got a problem, you know, you don't have a home, but you can't stay here. So we give them, you know, a period of time to pack up and move their belongings, and then we find them a week later on a different property, and we're having the same conversation again. And we really think that through these ordinance changes, we have a better ability to really say to people, I mean, the actual interaction in the field would look something like, look, you've got a couple of options. You, we have services and we want to help you. So let's get started. Let's get started helping you. But if you refuse, there's, you know, there's a, I guess, you know, maybe this is kind of a tough love principle, but if you refuse those services, you can't be here. You can't be in this location. We want you in our community, but you can't establish an encampment in our sensitive areas and in our parks and things of that nature. We'll go to the mat for you on getting you into a shelter, getting you the support you need. Kent Hay can tell you that since in his time here, he's already helped house people, pulled people from a homeless scenario in a tent. And in his short, you know, few number of months here, there are people that he has helped get into housing. And that's the story that we want to keep telling, or the success stories like that. But there are going to be people who resist. And so we really want to break the cycle of pushing people around, the same folks around from one public property to another forested public property. And that's what we believe these changes will help us do.
Great. Councilmember Sterns, hang on just a second. I've got a couple of questions for Jeff. First of all, Jeff, it's really great to hear the work that Ken is doing and the impact he's having already, and being able to house people even in a short time is a tremendous accomplishment. I have a couple of quick questions for you. One is on page nine of our packet. This is under New Section Code, Chapter Nine. And we have under subsection D, the various definitions related to shelters and what those are. You mentioned a couple of times now about offering people the help or assistance, but I don't see anywhere within the ordinance or the code where we actually mention that, that this, say that, you know, we do offer, do help. Is that something we should include in the in the code just to have that? Because all we have right now is definitions to what shelters are.
Yeah, so first of all, there's two parts to the answer to that. First of all, a little bit further up on page eight, the previous page, under exception. I think that's important because we talk about that camping is prohibited, and then we have exception. And I think it's important to call out exception number two, C2 there. Person is experiencing homelessness and there's no available overnight shelter for persons experiencing homelessness on the date that the prohibition prohibited. for persons experiencing homelessness on the date that the pro- prohibited activity occurs. So I think first I want to just call out that that's the, that's the, the code. If the council adopted it, it says that we can't do much, uh, if there isn't shelter availability. So there's that piece. We, uh, in terms of the definitions themselves and the different types of shelters, um, we, um, I don't know if this is answering the question directly, but, um, we've identified, uh, what we believe is a, uh, an appropriate or normal distance uh, away from the city of Auburn that would allow us to interact with all sorts of different types of shelter providers. So I think that expanded geography helps. Uh, sometimes people want to get to Redmond or something like that and they just don't have the fare to get there. So we want to help with that. Perhaps what you're asking about is, uh, the need or the, a better way of articulating the philosophy of the approach, uh, and which is hard to codify. But I think the whereas statements within the, the ordinance itself are a place that we could buoy up, uh, what the council with the city's approach, the compassionate approach should be. Uh, because that carries with it. You know, it, it carries with it the force of, of what the law has adopted.
All right. Yeah. I think that, that would be an excellent approach to do it in the whereas's. So as you mentioned, you know, the, the, a portion of it's compassion. The other is that, you know, if people are experiencing that and it's part of the compassion, but we want to make sure that there's somewhat of an outlet that's described. And so I would agree if you do it in the whereas's, um, I'm good with that. And hopefully other council members will be as well. Um, the other question I have before we move on to Councilmember Sterns is on page 11 of our packet. Um, we've updated the, uh, prohibitions under, um, section 12.32 and have redefined it as unlawful sidewalk obstructions. With our current situation, you know, we've made some exceptions already related to like restaurants being able to have outdoor seating and such. Should we have some sort of a statement in here that, um, either is, um, as approved by the city or as permitted by the city? Or something related to, uh, an exception, especially in a certain current situation we're in, rather than just saying that you can't do it?
Uh, so that's, um, that's a question I'm going to ask if Ingrid could chime in, uh, because one of the challenges that, that council, that anybody reading an ordinance, uh, like this, um, faces is that without, uh, providing the whole code, the whole chapter, which might be 32 pages long, and we're only changing one paragraph, uh, sometimes there's other sections of the code that already offer that. So since Ingrid's an expert in, uh, all things Title 12, I'll ask if she can help answer that question.
Happy to. So about halfway through that paragraph, it actually says, except as approved by the city engineer. And so the way that we do that is through the right of way use permit process that's within Title 12. And that's how the city engineer gives that authority for somebody to actually use that right of way. So even for the restaurants, we've talked about using the right of way for restaurant seating, that would still be a right of way use permit process that we would take them through to get that.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I, I missed the statement except as approved by city engineer. So thanks for pointing that out. So I have, so, all right. Uh, Councilmember Sterns.
Actually, Councilmember Trent Manuel has a question.
Okay, Councilmember Trent Manuel first, then Councilmember Sterns.
Yes, uh, this one probably I saw that Daryl was on. And on, uh, page eight, uh, it says the director of Parks and Rec and Recreation Departments may approve permits for camping. So what qualifies those people to be able to part, uh, camp in the parks?
Yeah, that's a good, yeah. Um, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, we on occasion approve specialty events such as scout groups that might be at the Olson Farm, or we've had overnight events at some of our other parks where it's an organized, maybe a youth church group is doing a one night camp in one of our parks. And so if through our permitting process, we can allow a single use of an organized group or activity outside of the gate of the, um, our regular campground at Game Farm Wilderness.
Okay. And Jeff, thank you for pointing out all the different, uh, directors and, you know, uh, departments that, that way we know who to contact as well? Or do we still go through you and you, uh, contact the appropriate departments?
Uh, for submitting an actual, uh, concern out in the community?
Yes.
I mean, any department head is going to be willing to take that email or that call and get it to the right person. Again, I mean, there's 420 or so people that work for the city and all those different departments. So, I mean, I think we want to encourage, uh, we, we don't do this until council, uh, takes an action to, to adopt an ordinance. But I think the tool that we like the most is C Click Fix. Uh, because it goes into a queue, a whole bunch of people see it and it gets assigned way without having to make people navigate all the city hall to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember J. Rog has a question.
Councilmember J.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, um, Deputy Mayor. Um, Jeff, I have one question. And that is when we, when we tell the people who are occupying parks, um, what if they turned around and say, I'm not going to leave? What are we going to do then?
Yeah, um, so, uh, what the code, what the code gives, uh, the city authority to do is trespassing. So what does it look like to be trespassed? I mean, we can talk that through, uh, what that experience is, but, uh, you know, we don't like to lead with that as our message. But you're right, there's going to be times where someone says, this is, uh, this is my choice. I don't, and I don't want to go anywhere. I like it here. And it, this is going to sound, uh, perhaps harsh, but, um, our belief is we shouldn't tolerate that. We need to, sometimes people respond that way because maybe they have a mental health issue and they haven't taken any medication. Uh, sometimes we need to be more forceful, we believe, in making sure that people help. And if they, if they continue to resist on that front, uh, essentially they're going to, they're going to, they're going to have to go to a different community or make a different kind of choice. Because, uh, this ordinance, just to be crystal clear, um, is an ordinance that doesn't tolerate just accepting what we believe to be an unsustainable and an inhumane way for people to live long term.
So how would we extract them then at that point?
Well, I think, uh, I might ask, um, Doug Ruth to chime in on this. I don't, um, I don't know if Dan O'Neil, I don't see him on the call, but, um, the, uh, I mean, the way a trespass plays out is, uh, well, I'll ask Doug to answer that question.
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, and there's different scenarios here. The police officer would have a lot of discretion. So if the scenario you're setting out, um, if I accurately describe it is that, uh, the officer maybe at night comes upon an individual who's camping. Um, and the officer, um, would notify him that, you know, the, the law says that you're not allowed to camp, um, here. Um, and you're not allowed to be in a park after hours. And if the person, as you described, said, well, I'm not going, I have no place to go. Um, the officer would then, um, notify the person that he's trespassing and ultimately could arrest the person. And the officer would have the choice of whether or not to just cite the person, provide them with a misdemeanor citation, or actually arrest them for the trespass after giving them notice. You would have to give them notice that they are trespassing. Um, and he, and so, uh, the officer had some discretion in that circumstance, whether or not they actually want to physically remove them. Now, if it was, if the officer's acting under the camping, the no camping, um, uh, provision of this code, the officer first would have to check and see whether or not shelter was available. If shelter was not available, the officer couldn't take action under the no camping. Officer could take action as being a trespass for being after hours, being in the park for after hours, but would not be able to act under the, the no camping if there's no shelter available. Does that help?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I, I want to add that I think one thing that Doug said that was important there is the piece that, uh, we are proposing that we have, uh, less authority if the sheltering is not available. It's only when sheltering is of a, you're refusing to go that we start moving in a more progressive, uh, series of enforcement acts.
And I guess I should also add that I was trying to draw out sort of the extreme. Um, talking to Ken Hayes, I know that, um, he would often be at these kind of, um, interactions. And his specialty is trying to find services, a shelter that's open. So, um, I hope I'm not putting words in Ken's mouth, but lesser than the extreme response is trying to convince the person to take the, the services that are available or to change their mind. So it doesn't have to be a citation. There can be a discussion that ends in the person being convinced to do otherwise. But if they are putting their foot in the mud, then ultimately it would, uh, be a misdemeanor situation.
Well, and, and because there's a, I can see visually a couple of council members who, um, are kind of uncomfortable, it seems like with how this is being described. Maybe we can just turn it over to Kent for a second. So he can kind of lay out what, what it looks like from his perspective as the person who's really making first contact with most of the homeless community.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Yeah. So, um, I can give you some scenarios of, of, of park stuff. So, um, when I do go into the park and I see someone camping, I do go over and first let them know that, um, you know, that, the, the park is closed from dusk till dawn. So if, if they're overnight, you know, they're, when I come back early in the morning and they're still there, then I let them know that, you know, it's a possibility they could be trespassed. Now I do offer before I even go there, um, if they want any kind of help or are they willing to go in the shelter? And if they say no, well, then we're at a situation where, well, you can't, you can't just stay here and do what you're doing. It's not an option. Um, if they say yes, then we just start making some phone calls and figuring out where people can go. Um, and then I still, like I, uh, had a couple in the park the other day, um, when I found a place for them to go, um, in a tent city situation because they didn't want to go indoors. And so, um, like I let them know if, even if I had to send them to Seattle, I would drive to Seattle and still help them. My goal was not just to put people in a shelter and leave them. My goal was really to try to help people get on their feet and get out of this situation. So, um, you know, when I contact people, I do make sure that there is a plan. Um, and again, in the parks, not necessarily that we have to, but I want to make sure that if we're going to, if we have to go to that route, that I want to offer them a place to go along if it's somewhere outside of Auburn, you know, with the bus pass, because they might be trespassed from the night shelter here and they can't go there. Um, and so we have to find some other alternative. When I go to the encampments, um, outside of the park and I make contact with people out right now, we don't have a camping ordinance, so we can't get people, um, to, to get up. But there are folks who I do talk to, I sit down with them, I put a plan together because there's many resources. I think people don't understand that. There's a lot of resources available. There's a lot of different plans in order to get you out of this situation into some type of housing. And since I've been here, like I said, I've been getting my feet kind of, trying to figure out the, the, everything that's going on. And I met a lot of people and everybody knows who I am now. And, um, you know, I've offered a lot of different opportunities for people. Some people have taken it and they've gotten into housing and they're no longer here. Um, and then other people just moving around in circles. But, um, the, the goal really is compassionate accountability and community. Um, I think, you know, at some point you can be over, overly compassionate to, to a point where you're hurting people. And so my goal is I need people to get up and come to the table and take what's being offered so that we can keep moving and get them where they need to be. Because nobody should have to live like this and we shouldn't accept that people are living like this.
Okay.
Okay, Kent, thank you very much for that explanation. And Councilmember Sterns, you still have a question?
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And, and, um, thank you, Kent. Really appreciate, um, you know, your, your, your words. And, uh, you know, it's just so important, the work that, that you're doing for people. And, and I'm really proud of, of what our city is doing, um, on, on that front. Um, it, it, it seems to me that I'm, I guess I'm kind of viewing this as like, there's a camping side and then there's a trespass side. And, and on the camping side, it seems like first of all, there's a citation which is $250. Um, that, that seems to me to be just, that, that doesn't seem workable, reasonable for people who, who are homeless. Um, and, and then on, on, on the trespass side, um, you, you know, there, it, it seems like this ordinance could use some, some work to, you know, maybe get, have more of a link directly in the ordinance itself to services. Um, and to, so for instance, you, you know, to actually specify a role of who can issue a trespass or specify who makes a first contact, who is responsible for being a first responder. Um, or for instance, you know, verifying that there is space available and we can get a person from A to B, um, before, uh, anything else happens. But, but as it is, um, you, you know, I, I just don't feel that, um, you know, number one, I, I, I don't think it's a, a crime to be poor. And number two, we, we just can't arrest our way out of homelessness. So, um, I'm, I'm just extremely uncomfortable with anything that at the end of the day makes being homeless a crime. Anyway, but thank you for your work on this and, and I hope we can, you know, continue to work on, on this ordinance because I, my, my sense is we don't probably need to have this next week.
Yeah, I, I'll just say that, um, in response to that, I mean, we're kind of in a, in a good spot in the sense that I don't think there's any philosophical difference of opinion on, um, how to implement the ordinance. I mean, what I'm kind of hearing is that, uh, we definitely have in this ordinance and we're going to continue to advocate for this, but that's a backstop, a safety net. Something where when we're not getting cooperation with someone to get out of their current condition, we have the ability to force that more so. So how we implement that, I could totally understand that, um, that, you know, there might be some discomfort without living it and seeing it and experiencing it and just having the trust and, you know, that, that all of the staff involved will do it the right way. So, um, I do think that, uh, offering up more whereas statements, perhaps there's some more language we can put like in that section that I referred to, that's the exceptions where it says camping's prohibited, except when? And where we say, except when, we say that when there's no shelter available. And, uh, uh, so I, I, I know, uh, Councilmember Sterns, uh, exactly where you're coming from. I hear you loud and clear. And I also think that, that, um, there's no difference of opinion. I think where the difference of opinion is, is not on the approach and the philosophy. It's, it's, uh, you know, maybe some of the wording, uh, you know, to make sure that it's clearer how we are doing this, uh, and we'd be happy to, to spend some more time, especially with the whereas statements. Uh, perhaps with, um, kind of what this written standard administrative procedure is for how we implement an ordinance, which every ordinance we adopt basically has an administrative procedure that describes how we're going to implement it. Not everything's always laid out in the code. So that might be another piece of, uh, information that provides a little bit more assurance that this is how it's going to be done. And it's just, and that's not going to change a year from now if there's different people.
Mayor Backus has a question.
Mayor, please.
Thank you. Not a question, but a comment. Uh, and for any of you that may be concerned that we are trying to criminalize homelessness, that is not the case. I have worked for the last seven years on homelessness initiatives, both in the city of Auburn and regionally. And the last thing that I would ever have brought forward to this council is anything that is going to criminalize homelessness. These are people. We are talking about someone's son, daughter, brother, sister, mom, dad, aunt, uncle. And so that is definitely not what we are trying to do here. We did bring Kent in as an expert in this area. Kent has done amazing work up in Redmond and they have done similar things to what we are trying to accomplish here. Uh, the goal is to get services to everyone. And it is more inhumane to allow someone to stay outside in the elements than it is to say you have to have services or you can't. to say you have to have services or you can't stay here. We are willing to help and we have always said we will take care of our own here in Auburn and we have proven that time and time again, working with all of the nonprofits in our area. Again, I would never even bring something forward that felt like it was criminalizing homelessness. But at the same time, there has to be something in place that people understand there are consequences to their actions. And so if we are going to respect these individuals, we have to have them be held accountable. Accountability is key to everything that we are doing. I believe that the government, the city needs to be held accountable, the funders, the service providers and those receiving services. And I would venture to say that a majority of the people in this city feel the same way, that there needs to be accountability for everyone that's involved in this process. And that is what this is setting out to accomplish.
Councilmember Trump Manuel has a question?
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Yes, this goes to Ken. Ken, I am so grateful that the city of Auburn has hired you and brought you in because it's really nice to hear the things that you have accomplished in finding homes for some of these people. And just driving around and looking out there, we, I don't see as many homeless people as I used to. And I just want to thank you, but also I would like you, like to know if you could give us, give the city council members updates because it was really nice to hear what you have done so far. And it would be nice to get an update from you every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jay Rogers has a question?
Councilmember Jay Rogers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to say that the $250 fine is, I think, a little bit too excessive, especially for these homeless folks. It would, it kind of criminalizes that for them and then they, I don't think they can pay that. And, and it, and it'll hurt them more. So that's my thought. Thank you.
If I might just also-
Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go to misdemeanor court over something like this. We have community service in the city of Auburn where you can work off any type of fee or fine that you have received. So there are ways other than monetarily to, to pay back any, any fines that have been assessed. Just wanting to throw that out there. So it's not that we want someone to not be able to pay a fine and then continue and have a bench warrant or something. That is criminalizing homelessness. That is not what we are doing here and it's not to bring people into this downward spiral. The goal is to be able to help them and get services to them. The fines is that backstop if nothing else is working. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Kenny Ruth has a comment?
Okay, Doug, go ahead.
Sorry, I just make, add on to that, that the court in an infraction situation doesn't have to impose the $250 fine. It can reduce the fine. And there are specific considerations, which not being a prosecutor, I can run those down, but being homelessness, I believe, would be one of those considerations. And I can, I can look into that, but certainly a judge would have, be able to reduce the $250 fine. That's the maximum fine. That's not necessarily the fine that has to be imposed.
Okay, before we move on, Councilmember Sterns, Jeff, could you clarify for us, please? Because I'm seeing two things here. One is under the unlawful sidewalk obstruction, we have the violation with a civil infraction of the maximum penalty of $250. And then we have the order to disperse, which carries a misdemeanor punishable offense of 90 days in jail and/or $1,000 fine. So I want to be clear, when we're talking fines, what we're talking about here?
Yeah, depending upon the violation, whichever chapter it's in, some are listed as misdemeanors and some are listed, listed as ticketable offenses. So like Doug mentioned, $250 is listed in several locations as a maximum penalty that could be issued. And then other forms of violating the ordinance or a camping rule is a misdemeanor instead of a civil infraction.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
There we go. Thank you. So is there, I'm going to assume that that's someone who's homeless is not going to show up in court. So Doug, can you explain, I mean, have you seen judges just go, I'm going to waive the fine or reduce it to, you know, $2.50? I mean, is that common or, I mean, I just try to be realistic here.
All right. Because I'm not a prosecutor, Councilmember Sterns, so I don't have personal experience with these circumstances and I apologize for that. So I don't know how common it is. I'll have to get back to the council on that question. I will run that down with our prosecutors.
Okay, everybody, unless there's any other questions?
Director Gao has a comment?
Director Gao.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one clarification because I see where you were pointing out the $1,000 misdemeanor fine and that is specific to damaging a water or a sewer facility, not necessarily related to them just tripping on the property. So that's actually damage to our facilities.
Okay, yeah, just, just real quickly here, under, on page seven, under the chapter seven, it says, "When any person violates subsection A of this section, the law enforcement officer may order that person to stop the violating activity and move out or disperse. Any person who fails to refuse to obey such orders is guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by a maximum of 90 days in jail and/or a $1,000 fine."
And, yeah, and that's related to when they're actually obstructing the right of way.
Okay.
There's a couple of other sections related to sewer that are specific to when they're damaging those facilities.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. So Jeff, what I'm hearing is that you mentioned adding a few more wherashes. And I was actually going to ask you to have some administrative procedures included with that. I'm glad you brought that up. So perhaps you could look at doing that for us and have that back to council for, for another go around here.
Yeah, definitely. I've got those two items noted and then I also took note that the city attorney's office is going to look into the Pippin case. Piper, Pippin? So we'll, we'll make sure we understand the facts on that and that we're consistent with whatever approach we propose. Yeah, so those are the three items that I had.
Great, very good. Well, everybody, thank you very much for a, for a long discussion and input. And thank you to staff for joining us and your input as well, very valuable. And once again, Kent, thank you for the work you're doing within the city and for helping those that are most in need. All right, we will move on now to our next section, which is our finance, technology and economic development discussion items. And for that portion of the meeting, we will turn this meeting over to Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, tonight we have two items under finance, technology and economic development. The first item is five, item five A on the agenda, a small business recovery grant program update. And this would be Director Hinman or her designee.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. I will turn this over to Doug Lane, who's been overseeing the programs and I think he has some pretty good news for you.
Good news.
Doug, you're muted.
I thought I had hit that button along with the video. I apologize. So thank you for having me. Wanted to take a few minutes and give you an update of where we are. It's been about six weeks since we, since we brought the last resolution to you to get this program established and get it on the street and start to get checks out to some of our businesses. So just to give you a quick rundown, the two resolutions that you passed in June gave us a total of $759,565 that came in through CARES Act, through the Department of Commerce and Clark, and excuse me, King County. Through the process, we established that approximately 20,000 of that would be used for the purchase of PPE equipment and developing a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to distribute that. I will tell you that that's already been taking place through some great work with Public Works. They were able to find 500 gallons of sanitizer. The King County gave us through the Chamber of Commerce, not the thousands of face masks. And last week, there was already a distribution of those two products out to hundreds of local businesses here in town. That also then allowed us to add an additional 90, $80,000 to $90,000 to the 650 that you authorized in the first resolution. So we're in the process of, excuse me, getting that out onto the street. We also said that we would establish the criteria for it and you'll see in the memo on your agenda, the basics are that the business be 10 or fewer employees, be a for-profit company, be in good standing, i.e. a business license, and has a physical presence in the city of Auburn and that they've had an impact from the shutdown of the whole C-19 issue. With that, we were able to then establish some of the filters on our business licenses, who would not be available or would be eligible. And that list is there for you on the memo also. If you have any questions on that, our, our thought pattern behind those, I can answer those for you. And then I also wanted to give you a quick rundown of what we've done to date. The first initial vetted list was 454 businesses qualified. Those were emailed invitations, along with the application, to fill it out, get it back to us with their W-9 to be put on the list to have a check sent to. Second notice was sent out on July 16th. On the 21st, we placed stories with the Auburn Reporter. Maybe you saw the story on the front page of Thursday's paper. And also the Auburn Examiner has helped us put the word out, excuse me. I believe that today, letters were printed that are going to be going out tomorrow's mail to anybody in that list that has not applied yet. And we also are doing, we've probably between 25 and 40 face-to-face visits out to businesses on that list to take them hard copy applications to fill out. A number of those are businesses that have English language issues. So it's been a one-on-one process with a lot of them through a family member, an employee, an interpreter of some sort and just kind of a hands-on, one-on-one situation to help them fill it out. And we bring them back to the office to get them into the system. But we've been paying attention and handling those on a day-by-day basis. We also have, through the help from a couple of the other city departments, I've had people come forward that this week are going to start making direct phone calls out to the businesses that are on the list as a call list to make them aware of it. I will tell you that that's been our biggest problem is getting the businesses to pay attention to it. I've had, I've walked in and had them say right to my face, oh, yeah, I saw your email. I didn't, I didn't think it was real. I deleted it. Oh, it must have gone to my spam folder. I've heard all the stories in the last couple of weeks. So it's getting their attention and making them understand that it's real. So that's the effort we're, we're in the middle of. As of the end of last week, we had distributed $132,600. I will tell you, we were off to a bumper start this week. We've already, as of five o'clock tonight, we'd already approved, I believe, 28. Got approved today and I know that there's another 25 that are in process for approval. So I think by the end of the week, we should have another good run at it. So our goal is to try to hit 100 this week and get another 130-some thousand dollars out. And finance is doing a great job. They've done special check runs for us when we've asked. So we're making a real effort to get the money on the street and have it be an impact. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Great news, Doug. I think that all of our small businesses really appreciate the opportunity here to participate in this program. Any questions for Doug on this, on this subject, folks?
Councilmember Trump Manuel has a question?
Doug, that is awesome news. That's, I'm glad to see you guys are working hard too, trying to get back to all of those businesses. How many of, do we have some that have closed down for good or they're going to be coming back?
That I know of, that I've been made aware of or walked in and been told that they're closing or not going to reopen, I know of three.
Okay.
Not bad. And I will, along with that, I want to throw out this one statement. I've walked in or received emails or phone calls from businesses saying, thank you very much, we don't need the $1,300, we've done okay, give it to somebody else. So we've had more of those than we have businesses closed down.
That is great to hear.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Malinga has a question?
Hey, council member?
Yes, I was just curious. I saw we helped, you know, about 450 businesses, but how many businesses total do we have in Auburn? I was just curious.
I would say it, I think we kind of bounce right around that 48 to 5,000 mark. It might be a little less, but that's about what, where we average. We've had good growth each year of business licenses. It's always been, you know, that's 7% range per year in growth. So, but around 5,000, that's always a number, good, good number we quote out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council for Doug?
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns.
Hi, thanks, Doug. Do we, do we get a report back from the businesses as to what they do with the money? And then do we have to let anyone know what gets done with the money?
No, there was no requirements in the audit requirements that we needed to get any kind of an end report. And that was the one thing that made it, has made it somewhat attractive to a lot of these small businesses, that there wasn't that paperwork trail that they were asked to do. I've been asking and we have been receiving some, I think one, we've got a written letter back from them. So we are getting some input, we're getting, we're seeing Facebook posts. When I'm out visiting these folks, I, I ask them if they would think about it, if they would send us something. And then the one thing we are to do is we're vetting through every single email address to make sure that they're correct. So when this is all over and done with, we'll do another email out to them and ask for any return replies that could give us some, a story to what they might have used the money for. So we'll, we'll get some feedback like that, but we didn't want to put an additional paperwork trail on their backs.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions from a council?
Help us get the word out.
Okay, hearing no other questions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the budget refresher, which will be Jamie Thomas.
Yes, thank you, council and mayor. And we've got a couple of hours on our agenda for tonight. So we may or may not use all two hours, but really the purpose of tonight's meeting is to, if this is actually the first of a series of four workshops, the next three workshops are in the process of being scheduled and should be on your calendars soon, but we're scheduling to have or hoping to get those scheduled in the third weeks of September. But the purpose of this workshop tonight is just to do a budget refresher, an overview of the biennial budget process, as well as orient the council with the budget book. I'm hoping that everybody either has a hard copy or received a link to the electronic version of the 2019, 2020 adopted budget that you can follow along with. It won't be necessary that you have it, it would just be nice, you can actually see what I'm referring to as I go through certain sections of the, of the budget document. And then if you don't have a hard copy, a copy of the budget- And then if you don't have a hard copy, a copy of the budget, the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget, do let me know. We have extras available and we can coordinate to get those to you folks if you need them. And then the last portion of the meeting tonight is to talk about, to review the general fund, city service areas and the programs that the general fund supports. So I'm, I'm gonna try facilitating that conversation and see what kind of feedback the council has for us on with the city service area information that I had distributed earlier, early last week. So now I was going to switch to my PowerPoint, but it looks like my video got turned off. So Sean, would you be able to access that PowerPoint slide for me? It's under the the agenda items?
Director Thomas, you can still share your screen.
Oh, okay.
Cut your video.
All right. Okay, so can everybody see my shared screen?
It's working.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we will go to just the end of it for tonight. Again, this is a high-level description of what we're talking about and some pages.
Director Thomas, it'll be just one second. It's still loading.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now it's loaded.
Okay, and we're only going to stay here for a second. This is really just more of a little contents for the, the presentation tonight. We're going to quickly overview some of the budget elements as well as do some fun and overview discussion. A lot of this is going to be things that we've already discussed in the last several months. And this is just to hit some of the key points again, because a lot of information, I, I think, hopefully, the more often you hear it, the more often it becomes familiar. But, but I'm trying to save it from being too redundant. So the next slide, I'll give it a second. I wanted to do a brief discussion into my annual budget. As a city, we have the option to do either. A lot of large cities in Washington State have elected to do the biennial budget. In both cases, we, staff and the mayor does not have the authority to exceed the legal appropriate budget, which is adopted by council. It is time limited, meaning it ends at a certain time. In our case, having a manual budget, it ends at, at the end of the fiscal year. And we cannot be carried forward without council action to carry forward unsaid money. And it is retroactively granted, which means we have to have it adopted by, by December thirty first. Because if we get to January first and we do not have an adopted budget, we're not afforded to spend any money at all. So we can't go back in time. And the council say, oh no, we gave the, the city authority to spend the dollars retroactively. We don't, we don't have that authority. So obvious, as it implies an annual budget, we would go through the, the budget process every single year. And do every other year. So it's, it has to be in an odd number of years. So the first year of the biennium has to be an odd number of years. And
Jamie, you seem to be breaking up a little bit. I'm not sure what the reason is.
Okay.
Director Thomas, I'm sorry. I believe it's a bandwidth issue. And so could you please call into the meeting?
I certainly can do that.
And then you can still present on your shared screen, but your voice will come through the called-in number. Deputy Mayor, do you want to recess for one moment?
That would be appropriate, yes.
So I would need you to do that. Oh, I'm sorry, council member Baggett?
Yes.
Would you like to recess the meeting for five minutes while we get Jamie set up?
Let's do that. So we will call a recess for about five or 10 minutes until we get the, the audio straightened out here. Thank you.
The sound was a different sound in my head.
She did join in. Do you want to ask her to confirm with her?
I'll just move her over.
I'm just going to go back in the meeting.
It's a phone.
All we want to do is give.
Do you mean we can't move her over?
Everybody the tools to do their job. See my options?
You gotta unshare her screen?
And I think I connected.
You are, Jamie. We can hear you.
All right, so I will, I will let you tell me when to start again.
So Jamie, we recessed for five minutes for you to get reset. I believe we have about three minutes left.
Okay, perfect.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
So we can go ahead and do your presentation here so that there's not the lag, if you would like that. And then you can just tell us.
That would be excellent. Yep. That would be excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like we have everybody online. So Jamie, if you want to proceed.
Okay. Sounds good. And I think that Sean has agreed to go ahead and page through my PowerPoint presentation. Is there a way to mute me on my computer?
You are muted on your computer? And to be honest, if you're on the phone, you can go ahead and just log out of the Zoom meeting on your computer.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to log out. We should be on. I apologize for the inconvenience. We should be on slide number three right now. Going over the biennial versus annual budget. We have, as the city, we have opted to do the biennial budget, which is created in an odd number, in an odd number year, which means that the first year of the biennial budget is an odd number. And the reason for that is actually has to do with the fact that it's does not coincide with political, with election cycles. So it can't, you can't politicize the budget, the budget process. It also, because it is so resource-intensive, having, putting together a total, a complete budget, going to the incomplete budget process, the biennial budget actually saves time. It's not as redundant. Even though we do budget amendments throughout the year, those budget amendments are less time intense compared to doing a full, the full four hundred and thirty-seven page document every single year. The biennial budget is also longer perspective, so it helps us be better financial planners. Rather than looking at trying to fill budget gaps on a year-by-year basis, we have to do it at least on a two-year basis. And many times, like what the city of Auburn does is we look five and 10 years in advance as well, forcing us to not make just one-time gaps to make the budget balance, but look at more systemic changes to the budget, so it balances long-term. And it gives policymakers a better view of the overall budget. So it helps us better link the, the mission, the vision, the values of the council to the things that we're doing and we're not just trying to make the numbers balance. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. And these are kind of, it's a quick discuss, discussion on our budget priorities. So we have a lot of, the goals pop up in several different areas, whether or not there are council, it's the, the council values, whether it is our budget, overall budget goals or our departmental goals. And from a budget standpoint, it's a much higher level look at how do we as a city link the city's vision and mission to the things that the department is doing and the goals from a department basis. So we establish budget goals from a very broad level. And then each department, when they're putting together their, their budget to be able to link to the broader goals, we have our own goals individually within department and within our department to link to those, those broader goals. So we have the option of having formal versus informal goals. And the city actually has formalized our, our, our mission, our vision and our core values. And this helps, I think, focus all the departments citywide to being able to fulfill the needs and, and and the wants of the council and the community. And usually it's a living document. It's something that needs to be updated. I'm going to go through some of those, the mission, the vision and the values that the city council has identified and adopted in the past. And you can see it's been a while. And it's an opportunity to have us, have this conversation perhaps in the future. And it helps, when we have a more formalized process, it really helps us focus. If we're outside of a normal, if we do it in a retreat sort of format, like we did with our retreat back in March, to really sit and focus on which priorities are most important to us. And rather than just coming up with an extensive list of items that we want to be, which we want to be everything, we really need to focus on the things that are most important and prioritize a smaller list of items that are more important to us. So then on the next slide will show us really how we link the overall council and city mission to the budget and the budget processes. And this is just a hierarchy. We start with the vision. We go to our values. That's how we accomplish our vision and then we, and that's from there is where we develop our broad budget and department goals. On the next slide is actually the mission that was adopted by the council in December of two thousand and fifteen with Resolution fifty-one eighty-eight. And the mission of the city council is to provide a service-oriented government that meets the needs of our residents, citizens and business community. That takes us to the next slide, which in that same resolution identified a, a very long but good list of values that the, the council has. So the, the council had adopted seventeen core values, innovated respectful, dedicated, hardworking, ethical, fair, environment, environmental sustainability, trustworthy, financially responsible, charitable, safe, transparent, engaged, responsive, supportive of the arts, supportive of lifelong learning and embrace diversity. So that's a lot of values. So that, of course, we want to accomplish all of those, but to really narrow that down on the next page, on the next slide, we have seven core values that came out of this, that are published in the comprehensive plan that was also published in December of two thousand and fifteen. And this work actually began in two thousand and fourteen with Imagine Auburn. It was a community and council collaborative process. And it really is taking those seventeen core values and condensing them down into seventeen broader values. So that's character, service, celebration, sustainability, wellness, economy and environment. So it's with these core values that we really kind of go into setting up the budget process itself. It's for each of the departments, what are we working towards, which, which kind of values? What, what work do we need to do in order to achieve these values? And there was an update to Imagine Auburn in two thousand and eighteen, and that's on the next slide. And it condensed those seven, those seven core values down even further. Now, this isn't in the comp plan. This is, this was just an update to the core values. It's safety, economy, environment, character, diversity and service. So very similar. It's really all the same things condensed down into five core values. With all of, with those core values in mind, in the Resolution fifty-one eighty-eight adopted by council, that's where we landed on the vision. So using these core values, our vision is to be a premier community with vibrant opportunities. That's the next slide. I'm sorry. It's a short, a short slide. That leads us to our broad budget goals for putting together both this budget and previous budgets. So on the next slide, our broad budget goals, you can see there is a list of seven goals. The first five are actually goals that are, are broad budget goals that we've had for the past couple of years. And they put an asterisk next to a couple of them, because in some cases, I think those goals have evolved not only over the last two years, but even more specifically over the last six, six to twelve months. So in the past, safety was always really public safety oriented, so really police department specific. But this year, it, it, it means a lot more than that. There's a lot more community engagement. There's a community engagement element, a homelessness effort and just homelessness outreach as well as affordable housing and other community services. So it goes beyond just what the traditional public safety element that we've thought of in the past. It extends much further than that. Infrastructure, these are, this is the discussion of our, the city's aging infrastructure, outdated infrastructure, facilities that are maybe too small or inadequate for the work that we need, need for our employees as well as streets, roads and all of the parks and everything, all of our other general governmental assets to be able to provide service to our citizens. Thriving local economy has been a broad budget goal for the city for many years. In the past, it's really focused on attracting new business, bringing in more industry and more diversity in our businesses. I think particularly in the last several months, this has evolved to not only continuing to want to attract businesses, but knowing that that's not our only goal. I think with the conversation that we had just previously with Doug Lean, we're talking about supporting and sustaining our small businesses in the light of really a catastrophic economic event and how that's really impacted our small businesses. So again, same goal, but it's taken on a bigger meaning and it really encompasses more than it used to in, in the past. We still want to celebrate a livable community. We want to celebrate our diversity and we want, we want Auburn to be a place where people want to live and visit and work. And responsible government, so how can we be transparent and good stewards of taxpayer dollars? Two things that I've added to the list from prior years is sustainability or financial sustainability. And that is a continuation of the conversation that we really had back in, in March at, at the council retreat. You know, that, it falls under the responsible government umbrella, but I think that we have had a much more specific focus and a lot more conversation over how to make particularly our general fund financially sustainable over a long period so we can continue providing all of those other very specific goals and, and values. And then there's equity, inclusion and opportunity for all is another broad budget, budget goal. Again, in the last several months, there's been more focus. And, and an example would be when we've had to go through and make cuts to our budget, when we're looking at our twenty twenty budget to help get in alignment with, with some of the revenue losses that we're expecting with COVID. One of the areas that we were looking at were some discretionary line items that we could cut. And one of the easy things And one of the easy things that felt like not something that we wanted to cut was our putting a pause on our equity and inclusion program. And that quickly became obvious that that's not an area that we can play, push pause on. And in fact, we need to move full steam ahead with that. So that is a goal that we have, that we, that we're working with, that's a parameter that we're working with within the citywide for twenty-one and twenty-two. On the next page is an example of how those broad budget goals link to our department goals. So I use the finance department as an example. We actually have a couple more goals, but for illustrative purposes, I use just a few of them because they're, because they're easier to read on the screen, otherwise the font gets kind of small. But as an example, when we're putting together our budgets, we look at the goals that we had established for ourselves in the prior biennium. We identify the progress that we've made towards those goals and then what are our goals for the future biennium? And in this case, the very first one is, as an example, is we had implemented new automatic meter read, new automatic meter reading systems. So we can record all of the water consumption information electronically. We don't have to do physical meter reads anymore. The next phase, which is our twenty-one, twenty-two goal, is to have a customer portal so customers can actually see this meter read consumption in real time. So that would be an example of a project that we are moving forward with in twenty-one, twenty-two. And how does that link then to our overall core values? It hits, sometimes it hits one, one of those core values, sometimes it's multiple core values. And in this case, it meets the service piece, which is how do we be a transparent government and provide information to residents and citizens and customers? It's a sustainability issue and an environmental issue as well. It helps customers monitor their water consumption in real time and hopefully reduce the amount of lost water through either leaks and, um, through their main line or even just lost water through leaky toilets or leaks within the home. I'm not going to go through all of our, our goals, but I did as an example, link how different, different goals that we've identified, how they, how they link to those broader city, city core values. Then on the next page, switching gears just a little bit, that was more of a discussion on how we link the cities, the city council's mission and vision to our department budgets. I wanted to give just a really brief overview on when we're putting together our budgets as directors, we all have budgets that we put together that live in different funds. So not all funds are created equal and we do different things in all of our different funds. So public works, human resources, administration, we all have several different programs that we oversee that actually have activity in different funds. So finance doesn't have a budget just in one, in the general fund, but we do have a budget also in an internal service fund as well. And I think that that's the case for just about every single department in, in the city where we have budgets that cross all different kinds of funds. So a brief overview of the different kinds of funds, there's three main funds. We have governmental funds, proprietary funds and fiduciary funds. Fiduciary funds are the most restricted funds in the respect that the money in those funds is not city money. We're actually holding those in trust for other people. In this case, our funds are the fire pension, um, the fire pension fund. That's where we make our firefighter pension payments from. And then the cemetery endowment fund, where we cannot spend the principal of that endowment that we can only allocate the interest earned on that endowment in a way that the endowment allows us to spend it, which is on cemetery maintenance and operations. And if you have your budget in front of you, page four of the budget is, gives us an actual list of every single one of the funds that we have as they fall within the governmental, proprietary or fiduciary categories. So I'm just, these, the, the one, the funds that I have listed on the PowerPoint are just the general fund types. Page four will actually list the specific funds that we have in the city of Auburn. Proprietary funds are the funds that are business-like in nature. There are, the revenue in those funds is restricted solely to being used for the services that that money was collected for. For instance, our enterprise funds are all of our water sewer storm utilities. All of the money collected for, from water customers for providing water service has to be used for the water fund or the water capital fund. The internal service fund is also business-like in nature, but rather than serving external customers, it serves all of, it serves internal customers. Internal customers being all of the other departments within the city. We've got our IT department, our IT fund, as well as our equipment replacement fund and a few of our insurance funds are all internal service funds. And every other fund in the city pays their relative portion and ownership in, back into the internal service fund, and that is how the internal service fund is funded.
Jamie?
Governmental, yes?
I don't believe there's a page four in the binder.
It is after section one, budget summary.
I have it in mind, Mayor.
It's the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty biennial budget.
Uh, I've got the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two with me today, sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry about that. We had, since we haven't distributed that to council yet, um, I was just orienting with the overall, what's the budget book look like and how they can get familiar with it before we bring the preliminary budget in September?
My apologies.
I'm sorry, my apologies, I apologize for that. So then, um, the third, the, the, the final fund type are governmental funds. And obviously the biggest fund, both as a governmental fund as well as any fund throughout the entire city is the general fund. Um, and that has the least restricted revenue sources in it. Those mostly are all taxes and can be used to support all of the other activities that none of the other funds are able to provide. The special revenue fund, the debt service fund and the capital project fund, although they provide governmental services in nature, whether it's cap, governmental capital projects or whether it's paying debt service or governmental activities or special revenue fund to support, um, uh, general government services, that money generally is always restricted to a very specific source. So capital projects generally are funded with either grants or REIT money or impact improvement fees or impact fees. Those, those money are all very, very specific on how they can be spent. It supports a general government project in nature, but it's still restricted to, to specific items. Whereas the general fund, seventy-five percent of it is, is taxes and that money can be spent in most cases, um, pretty unrestricted, has a very few restrictions on it. So just a quick review on the next slide is the services that the general fund provides. And I'm sure you guys have seen this list many times now. So mayor and council, your budgets are all paid for out of the general fund. Administration, the police department, SCORE, which is our jail. Also Valleycom, which is nine-one-one, which directly supports the police department. Human resources and risk management, the finance department, the city attorney, community development, public works, parks, arts and rec, streets and then non-departmental. And non-departmental is usually their one-time transfers out or one-time payments or for items that really aren't specific to a specific department. An example would be our, our other post-employment benefits for our left one employees are paid out of a non-departmental account as well as certain dues and memberships. Our animal shelter payments to, to the Auburn Humane Society are all paid out of the non-departmental account. On the next page is just a brief overview. We talked about operations, um, general fund operations. We also have a very lengthy section, which I'll talk, I'll walk you through in a little bit, all of our capital funds. So the first five funds that you see on there are all proprietary funds. There are water, sewer, storm, cemetery, airport. In addition to having an operating fund, they also have capital funds. And in most cases, um, the capital funds are almost wholly supported by rate money that are, uh, rate fees that are collected from rate payers out of the operations fund. When we develop our rate studies for our utilities, we build in the future need for capital improvements. And as we save up money for those capital improvements, that is, we use that money and transfer it into the capital funds. We also rely heavily on bonds for our water sewer and storm. We just had, if you recall, this had a large bond issue just a couple of months ago for our water fund, where we refunded some outstanding debt as well as had a new debt issue to pay for some large capital projects. The repayment, the principal and interest payments are paid then with the, with the rates that we have collected from water customers. The next two capital funds that we have on the list is equipment rental and innovation and technology. Again, those are our internal service funds, so while they also have a, a regular operating fund, we also have the capital fund where we account for the purchase of the large pieces of equipment that we're replacing over time. And then we also have governmental capital funds and that accounts for streets, streets and capital projects that are related to parks and facilities and other general government projects. So the next page is our twenty-one, twenty-two budget calendar. And this looks very similar to how our normal budget calendars would look. It's all, it has all the same elements that it would normally have. The only thing that is a little bit different than it is in prior years is we do, are a little bit behind. Normally we would be having this first workshop at the end of June and we would be continuing into the end of August into the beginning of September. So by the time we have our last workshop, um, going over the preliminary budget, we'll probably be a week or two behind. So, um, that, that was just more of an effort, a lot of our focus was on COVID impacts and trying to make sure that our revenue projections are on point, um, moving forward for our, as close as we can anyhow, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And as you can see about halfway down, um, we have, um, our revenue forecast is finalized. So we are, that's not until the second week of September where we have that on the list. And, and the reason for that is because we, although we're on track, we haven't seen anything surprising above and beyond what we had originally estimated at the onset of COVID. We want to make sure we have a couple more months of information to help us make sure that we are confident in the direction that we're moving for with twenty-one, twenty-two. As I mentioned a couple of times, we will be having our workshops two, three and four through mid-September. Beyond that, we will distribute the preliminary budget. We take the feedback that we receive from council and we amend the preliminary budget as we present it to you as, um, with any feedback and re-prioritizations that you give us. And then we will hold a public hearing. And with that public hearing, we will have a discussion of our major revenue sources for twenty-one, twenty-two. We will have a public hearing number two, which will take place in November. And that, the main focus of that, uh, public hearing is to actually receive feedback from the public on the budget document itself. At the same time, we will be setting our twenty-one, our twenty-twenty-one property tax levy, which we have to do annually. And then we will have our public hearing number three is scheduled for the end of November. And along with that, that same, at the same time, that evening, we will be adopting our budget and our capital facilities plan, which is adopted by ordinance. So beyond, beyond twenty twenty and beyond the actual budget adoption, and I think you guys are probably all getting familiar with the process so far, is what happens beyond that budget adoption. So in March twenty twenty-one, we will have compiled the, the full budget with all this appendice, all the updated appendices and that final budget will be printed and distributed. By April, we'll be getting ready for our first budget amendment already. And by June twenty twenty-one, we will be doing our mid-year amendment. In November, we'll be doing our property tax levy for twenty twenty-two. And then at the end of twenty twenty-one, we will be doing a mid-biennial review and a year-end amendment. And the mid-biennial review is an important element because that's actually required by state statute that if we adopt a bi, if we are adopting a biennial budget, we have to, before the end of the first year, so before the end of December twenty twenty-one, we have to do a mid-biennial, biennial review of our major revenue sources to make sure our assumptions for both twenty twenty-one are on track and that we've looked forward to twenty twenty-two and making sure that all of our original assumptions are still true. And if they're not, we need to make adjustments accordingly, which we already are doing throughout the year with all of our budget amendments, but that is the one budget amendment that is required by statute. So because it's something that we do every year and because it's kind of complex, I wanted, the next slide is on property tax. And I, I hope to make this a little bit easier and I, this is more of a, I, I feel like property tax is a very important element because it makes up such a large portion of our general fund budget, but it's also can be really complex. And sometimes you have to go through the calculation a few times before it is clear. There are really a couple of, of key words that are usually, that are mentioned a lot when talking about property tax and that is assessed valuation or AV. There's the, the amount levied, the actual levy amount, and then there is the levy rate. And so all of those numbers are completely different and we actually back in to, the first number that we have available to us is the assessed valuation or the AV. And we have to back into our levy rate with all the other information. So the first piece of information we need, and we get this from the county, is the current year assessed valuation. So for simplicity purposes, let's say our assessed valuation for all property in the city of Auburn is ten billion dollars. We also get to add in the, the assessed valuation of new construction that had been added in the prior year that we didn't have a chance to collect tax on. So the county will also tell us what the assessed valuation of the new construction from the prior year is. So we'll assume that that's two hundred million dollars. And then again, for simplicity sake, we'll assume that our levy rate from the prior year was one dollar. And so with this information is how we're able to get to our current year levy rate. So if we levied ten million dollars in the prior year and we add one percent, because we're restricted again by statute to one percent of the prior year levy amount, we're able to add a hundred thousand dollars. We then can add in the value of new construction, which is two hundred thousand dollars. And the way this is calculated is we take the assessed valuation of new construction, we divide it by a thousand and we multiply it by the prior year levy rate. So since it was new construction related to the prior year, we have to apply the prior year rate to it, which is where we get the two hundred thousand dollars. So that means for this year, we can levy a total of ten million, three hundred thousand dollars. Our levy rate then is calculated by taking the total amount that we levied, divided by the assessed value, divided by a thousand. So the, that leaves us at a dollar three. And the way we would say that is our levy rate is a dollar three per thousand. It's complicated, but that's how, how we get there. And there's some other calculations along the way that determine whether or not we get to take the full one percent or whether or not, um, we also have a levy maximum amount that we can levy. And I'll talk about that going through on the next slide, which is, is the city of Auburn's actual assessed valuation and levy rates over the last couple of years and then our forecast looking forward. So you can see twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, our assessed valuation on the top line. I've built in an assumption for twenty-one and twenty-two, a five percent increase in assessed valuation. That is our ten-year historical average increase in AV year over year. And then you can see where our levy from prior years, our, our levy from prior years are adding one percent, where we've added new construction and then that is what our levy rate is, um, estimate, what, what it was in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and what it's estimated for twenty-one and twenty-two. And then what that, what effect that has on our levy rate itself. And as you can see, our levy rate from twenty nineteen decreased in twenty twenty and it's expected to decrease each subsequent year. And the reason that's happening And the reason that's happening is because our assessed valuation, if it's increasing at a great weight, greater than one percent, means our numerator, which is the, our actual levy amount, is only increasing at one percent where the denominator, which is assessed valuation, is getting bigger faster, our levy rate continues to decrease. Which means we have, it's not capacity that we can take, but as a city, we have a two dollar and sixty-nine, or we have a two dollars thirty point three-two-five that we can assess max. So when we're calculating the levy rate, the one thing that the county makes sure, makes sure is that our levy rate can't exceed two dollars and thirty-two and a half cents. So we're nowhere near that two dollars, two dollars thirty-two and a half cents because our assessed valuation is growing quicker than our, our one percent increase each year. That's where we had, had the discussion in the past. If we were to do a levy lid lift, we do have some capacity there. Even if we do a levy lid lift, we can never go above that two dollars and thirty-two and a half cents. But because we're so far away from that max, we do have capacity there. So that is the discussion on property tax. I didn't know if anybody had any question on that specifically, because I was going to switch gears and go to the budget document next. Okay, so if we go to the next slide, this is where we're just gonna, I'm gonna run, hopefully not too long, spend too much time and belabor all the sections, but it is a four hundred and thirty-seven page document. And when we distribute the preliminary budget to you at the end of August, beginning of September, I want you to have some sort of orientation to all the elements in there, because there is a lot of information in here. And a lot of it's really, it's very interesting and useful information. A lot of it is the things that I'm explaining now, but in greater detail. And so starting off with section one, which is actually page one, that is just giving you a description of the fund types. So I talked about the fund types, it actually goes into much more detail about the fund types as well as the budget, the proposed budget by fund. It gives a general high, high-level economic overview, some of the external factors that are influencing the city of Auburn's budget. And then a high-level comparison of revenues and expenditures from year to year. Section two, which begins on page twenty-five, is how, what our budget development process looks like. So really kind of going through that budget calendar that we had reviewed, but going much more in-depth, talking about our, our, our goals, our, our mission and our values and how we develop the budget. I think, to me, the most important part of section two are the financial policies. So we have several different policies within the budget. Some of them are actually required by the SEC that we have in place, as well as the State Auditor's Office and just best prac, budget best practices. But some of the policies that you will find in there are debt management policies, our basis of budgeting, our cash and investment policies, our reserve policies. So we've talked a lot about our cumulative reserve fund when we've been having the COVID conversation as well as the fiscal sustainability and, and our reliance on using that cumulative reserve fund and drawing that down to support general fund operations. But that's not the only reserve fund we have. And so there is a discussion about the different types of reserves, whether or not they're cash flow reserves or whether they're of reserves for being able to replenish capital purchases. All of that information is in that section two of the budget. There's also, goes into more detail about our citywide goals. So again, going into more detail about some of the things that I talked about tonight. Section three is our financial plan, and that begins on page fifty-one. And that is, I think, next to the policy section is my second favorite part of a budget. So that can tell you how boring it probably is. But it's, it's really the description and outlook on major revenue sources. So it drills down in what are all the revenue sources, what are they doing year over year, what are our outlooks for the current year and things that we need to be keeping into account? Or what, what makes the general fund tick really when it comes to revenues? And it's a summarized version to the revenue manual that the finance department creates and distributes every year. But rather than being more focused on current year revenues, it's a longer, a longer look and a historical look back on the important revenues to the city. So going to the next page actually takes us to section four, which begins on page eighty-nine. And this is probably what you find most interesting, but it's the operating budget by department. It's divided by each individual generals, or each individual department. And it shows each department's organizational chart, the goals and accomplishments for each of those departments. So I shared with you the finance department goals and accomplishments, or a few of them anyhow. And each department, their goals and accomplishments will also be in this section of the budget. It also shows a comparative summary of their, of their budget by major categories. So salaries, benefits, professional services, that sort of thing. And as well as a summary of FTEs in that department over time. Then section five is the details of, whereas section four was a high-level summary of each department's budget. Section four is a much more detailed breakdown, begins on page two sixty-seven, of all of the revenues by type as well. So if you're talking grants, or if you're talking property tax or sales tax on the revenue side. And then it also presents a detailed breakdown of the expenditures by function. So again, or by, it's called object code, but that is accounting lingo. It really means is it salary and benefit costs, are they supplies, services, capital purchases? The, the, those costs, those expenditures are broken down also in section five. And then we also have, beginning on page two eighty-one, is the general fund budgeted expenditures by cost center. So it's a more condensed look at, and a comparative look at each budget by department as well as by, by cost center. Then page, or section six is, begins on two eighty-five. These are program improvements or new programs. So these are things that we've added to the budget that weren't there in prior years. And it gives a summary of the overall cost by department, that, by the departments that are requesting improvements and new programs, as well as the impact and the FTE, the new number of FTEs that that program will need. Section seven is also an important section. This is the capital project section. And I, I've in detail to help you roadmap in the future all the different capital projects. Because there's a lot of, a lot, we have a lot of capital projects in the city. And I'll help tab each of those project types. But really, there is, the beginning of that section is a summary of all the funding sources and uses. So how are we funding, what are all the projects by fund as well as how are they being funded? And then section eight is page three ninety-five. This is a section, it's filled with miscellaneous information, data and statistics and all of our long-term forecasting models as well. So this is, this is also really interesting information. If you, if there's anything that you want to know about the city, facts and details, a lot of that information there is there. There's property tax, property tax information a lot, in a lot greater detail also in, in the appendices section of the budget. So on the next page, this is going back to the capital project section, which begins on page three fifteen. And we have it organized, first all of our transportation projects, then our water utility projects, sewer utility, storm utility, parks, art and rec, and then general government. And under each of these projects, I noted in this slide, what are the main funding sources for these projects? So you can see for transportation, we rely really heavily on federal grants, REIT. So that's real estate excise tax and traffic impact mitigation money. Our utilities are all essentially funded with fund balance, which are those rate, the, the fees from rate payers that I talked about earlier. With the exception of water utility, we've added bond proceeds and there's some state and local grants in there as well. For parks, art and recreation, we have a reliance on park impact fees and mitigation fees, state grants, real estate excise tax, in King County Proposition Two levy money. So that's a portion, some park levy money that the county levies and we get a portion of it since we are within King County. And then the general government capital projects are funded primarily, again, with REIT grants and park impact fees. And on this page, you can see that I highlighted REIT a few times. So there it is in transportation as well as parks, art and rec projects and general government. And the reason I call that out is because we have a very high reliance on REIT to fund our capital projects. And we've been, REIT is really a one-time money. It's not, it's difficult to say how much of it we're, we're going to receive in a year. A lot of it has to do with large real estate transactions that occur. And on average, we expect to collect about a million dollars each year in, in REIT. That's what we budget for. And with COVID, we had made the decision in both, in twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two to do some reallocation of some money and use REIT to, to pay for some of our capital projects. And we, because of that, we are expecting to draw down a pretty significant balance of our, our REIT funds. So a total of three point two-five million dollars in our REIT money is money that we have, we are going to be reallocating as a result of COVID. And we're going to be using REIT on these, on these capital funds and freeing up some less restricted money to go back to the general fund. So that kind of leads me into our, our budget challenges. I think all of this is new. I, I really feel like I've, I've beat a dead horse here. We've, these are all the same things that we've talked about several times over the last seven months and actually beyond. But I'm listing these and I'm calling them pre-COVID. Really, everything is the same, except maybe a little bit accelerated. So because of COVID, of course, it has a more immediate impact on sales tax and the streamlined sales tax pieces. So I'm going to discuss these challenges more in the vein of, these are our general issues that we've had for the last several months and we've been talking about these. And hopefully, none of this comes as a surprise, I'm sure it doesn't. But our sales tax growth is dependent on economic fluctuations, which not funny, but is, has definitely been highlighted by the most recent events in the last four months. And sales tax is twenty-five percent of our general fund budget. Property tax growth is limited to one percent and that accounts for twenty-nine percent of our general fund budget. The sunset of the streamlined sales tax mitigation payments were supposed to go through twenty-twenty. It had, they were initially sunsetted to end through, through, in twenty-nineteen. That was extended to go through twenty-twenty. There had also been a lot of hope at the beginning of March that that was going to be extended even another five years on top of that. It was not, and in fact, it was cut short. So instead of ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, it now is, had sunsetted in June of twenty-twenty. So that was an immediate, almost five hundred thousand dollar impact to our twenty-twenty budget. And it accounts for two to three million dollars over the next biennium. Our demand for services increase, are increasing faster and greater than the budget revenue growth. We, I think, even before COVID, public safety, transportation and human services were all really important service areas and those costs were increasing at a, at a greater rate than our revenues. I would say in the last four months, those things probably even more so than ever before. But our revenue growth, this is a refresher, grows at about two point one percent a year versus our five point five percent growth in expenditures year over year, which leads to, in the future, a ten to twelve million dollar imbalance between the revenues and expenditures that we bring in. And then the last item there is that, that heavy reliance and REI, heavy reliance on REIT conversation that I had just mentioned. We have our street funds and our general governmental capital, where we've got aging infrastructure. We have need for new infrastructure. I think we've heard from our space planning consultants and our need in, in those areas. And not only do we have a lack of resources, but the resources that we do have is, is limited to approximately a million dollars a year. And we don't have any, at this time, we haven't identified any new long-term funding sources for those projects. So the next page, so the next page kind of leads us into the general fund service area discussion. So I, I kind of gave the very high-level overview of the budget process, the budget challenges that we've, we've talked about many times going into the creation of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And I put together a list of all of the general fund departments, their budgets, a brief description of what those departments do. I had sent you, it's also attached to the agenda packet for tonight, all of those city service areas for the council to look at and consider and ask staff any questions about, whether or not there needs to be, needs, if there's an opportunity for us to look at some of our priorities. But as a side note, before we get into some of those questions, I collected pretty informally some feedback from the council back in, at our retreat in March as far as what do they consider our highest priority general fund services provided in the city? And I got a list of nine areas in total. And the, there was four that were by far and large, by, but much, I would say ranked higher priority than, than the others. And tied for first were police, public safety, code enforcement, kind of all in the same vein. And then also tied for first was public works, with a primary focus on street, street preservation. The second highest priority was parks slash making Auburn a livable community and a place where people want to come. And then the third, the third most important item identified was social and health services. And some comments were very broad, saying just social and health services. But the lion's share of the feedback that we had received was, was using the homelessness and outreach and affordable housing issue. So a lot has changed since the beginning of March. Some of these priorities may be the same to council. Again, it was a really informal way to collect information. It was, there wasn't so, there wasn't a, a lot of structure to that question. It was a pretty free, a free-flow form of collecting that information from you. But, and with things having changed so much since March, some of those priorities have made, may have changed. Some of them may have changed quarter, I'm not sure. But with that, some questions or some things to consider. If we're, we're considering general fund program, program re-prioritizations, and these are things that we've, we've talked about at our, at our March retreat, was that for, for any cuts in programs to have a long-term impact, we really need to consider specific programs to either reduce or re-prioritize rather than just across-the-board cuts and saying everybody needs to cut ten percent. Some programs do have offsetting revenue. I mentioned this a couple of times, that you could identify a hundred thousand dollar program savings, but if there's offsetting revenue, you're not necessarily going to net a full hundred thousand dollar in savings. Some service departments have very little discretionary costs and most of their budget, ninety percent or more of their budget is salary and benefits. So if we're looking at making cuts to service departments that consider that there is a heavy FTE impact, some departments have very little mandatory or regular, regulatory, regulatory requirements that are essential at making Auburn, Auburn a livable community. So I'm thinking particularly of Parks, Art and Rec. They, there's very few requirements, but very important to the council and to the community as we've seen in the past. Cutting one program can have a ripple effect to other programs. So if we're going to be considering one program, we really need to dig deeper and, and see how, be as proactive as possible and figure out which other programs that could affect. We need to be careful that we're not just kicking the can down the road. We may be able to find a hundred thousand dollars in cuts this year, but how does that impact next year? I mean, are we going to have to still do the work, but maybe it's going to cost us even more in the future because we've delayed some important maintenance and repairs? And then I think, for me, one of the most important things is considering the morale and productivity impacts on staff. I think that since the recession, and we've talked about this back- I think that um since the recession, and we've talked about this um back in March, but since the recession in two thousand and nine, there, all the departments had made some pretty significant cuts. And staff were, have continually been asked to do less, do more with less. And in most cases, departments haven't even returned back to the initial staffing levels that they were um pre-recession, um, pre-two thousand and nine. And not only are they still working with similar staffing levels, but their workloads have increased. We're serving um uh our our community has grown and and the work and the projects that we are doing are are also greater. And I think in light of the last six months, um, we've asked a lot from our employees, um, both from a flexibility standpoint as well as from a pay and benefit standpoint. And we need to be, it's careful, we have to find that balance, try to find the balance between what we can do and what we can do to not um to hurt the morale and productivity of of our staff. So with those things in consideration, the last slide is this kind of a list of questions that I wanted to throw out to the council to maybe generate some discussion over the general fund programs or or to help uh see if there's any questions that you have about the the programs that that we have to offer and the and the things that we're doing. So with that, I don't know if there's any more talking that I need to do. If there's any questions that you have for me, if there's any questions that you have for the other directors as far as the services that we provide, I think now would be the time to to open it up to council.
Okay, council, uh, does anybody have any questions or are your eyes still glazed over? Uh, this is all very, very important stuff for all of us, and we're going to be doing more of this through the uh, the rest of the year and looking at what's coming up in the next two years. So I think that uh it's very important that we look at this and especially in light of the COVID-nineteen situation. Uh, I I I really am looking forward to see where we are with all of that and having taken that into consideration as well. Because I know that we've had to uh to adjust budgets in order to try to offset or compensate for some of the losses that we knew we were going to face as a result of that. So uh, does anybody out there on the council have any questions? Yes. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Um, yeah, I I agree with your your statement as you were saying. And uh, one thing that really gets to me for the impact, excuse me for a minute. I thought I had a sneeze. One of the things that really get to me for the impact uh on this is as we go forward as a council, looking at our next biennial budget and then the future, what it's going to bring for future budgets is how do we sustain our our services? Um, you know, Jamie's made some excellent points on the questions raised to us as a council in looking at that part of it, including how it impacts um employees within the city. You know, you 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 want to have a a high-performing with a high morale factor as we all would in any business to get the maximum um productivity out of employees and the maximum satisfaction in performing those duties. So I our task is a little bit daunting here in how we look at this. Um, I think one question I did have for for Jamie is, and Jamie, you've mentioned this before about REIT and we've talked about REIT not being sustainable. And in our March um budget retreat, we talked about the various options for raising revenues. You know, what does the temperature look like now for this council going forward with some of those suggestions and recommendations we made back at the retreat?
Well, um, so excellent question. Um, I'm not sure what so some of the things that we talked about specifically were increasing the utility tax rate um as well as um looking at a BNO tax. And I think the the primary um conversation around the BNO tax was making sure that it very specifically protected small business um and local business. And how can we craft a an ordinance, a BNO ordinance, that specifically protects those businesses? And really, um, you know, I think earlier Doug had mentioned that we have about forty-eight hundred businesses in the city structuring it where really you're only looking at five hundred to a thousand of those businesses um of the much larger international or national businesses that would be impacted by something like that. Um, I I can't say that um anybody likes the idea of new taxes or an increased taxes. Um, and so it comes down to how do we balance the needs of our business community with the needs of our citizens and the services that we provide.
Councilmember Brown has a question.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Baggett. I was uh hoping, can I, would it be possible for us to get copies of your slide deck? I really appreciate that PowerPoint demonstrate. Thank you.
Yep, yes, I will send it right now.
Councilmember Trout Manuel had a question.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Jamie, since we have talked about the utility uh taxes, when was the last time? And what percentage did we raise or have we raised the tax uh utility taxes?
We have, we have not um raised them yet. Um, that was a conversation that we had back at the retreat in March, at the beginning of March. And we had talked about really kind of a multi-pronged approach at at creating a fiscal, fiscally sustainable budget, um, the increased utility to, beginning in in year twenty twenty-one. Um, and the increased utility tax that we had looked at and we had discussed, um, kind of the baseline was looking at a three percent increase on utility tax. So those utility taxes are currently um, seven percent. Um, it would be an increase to ten percent was the, was the discussion that we had back in March. And that would be beginning January one.
January one. And if we say hypothetically, if we raised it to ten percent, what revenue would we be collecting? How much?
Let me pull that out. That was part of our retreat. I'm sorry, I didn't have the exact numbers.
Could you, could you get that to us later? And then my other question is?
Let me get that, yeah.
Okay. Uh, can I ask just one more question? And then with the BNO tax, so if hypothetically, again, if we decide to go that route, uh, would it be, uh, it's up to us council members to decide if it's going to be the big box warehousing? Things like that? Is that what we're looking at?
Cool, correct. So what um I would do, what we would be doing is I think that there is a lot of conversation about with, to set up a BNO tax, you would, you start with a model ordinance. And from there, you have um a lot of things that you can add, um, a lot of exemptions, deductions that you can add to it as well as your, the actual tax rates that you set are completely flexible um to to the council. So we got a, I got a lot of feedback, um, I think all of us got a lot of feedback from the council as far as what they would like to see if we were to have a BNO tax. Again, structured in a way that has um, zero, as little to zero impact on small and local business. Um, and so what I would do is I would bring forward um a draft of that model ordinance. And then, you know, the council, and then at that point, um, edit accordingly make any changes and feedback and commentary before anything got adopted. There's also a huge community outreach element. So businesses are fully aware of what it means to them. Again, making sure that they understand that most businesses wouldn't be affected in the way that the council has discussed it in the past.
Okay, that sounds great. I would, I would like to see uh, see you bring something to us uh in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council regarding the presentation? Hearing none. Jamie, thank you so much for a comprehensive review. And uh, with that, I believe I will turn it back over to Deputy Mayor DeCorsi.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. And uh, Jamie, yes, thank you for the presentation and the information. Council, as we've mentioned during the the budget retreat and the, of course, the directors and the mayor have all been working very, very hard on this um since we left that session. And um, you know, we'll see more information as we get into our our actual budget meeting starting in September. But uh, as I mentioned before, this is the, probably the most important budget that we can go through as a city council for the city of Auburn. So we are in those uh strange times, you know, even beyond what we experienced um back in the Great Recession, which was devastating. And we don't know where COVID-nineteen is going to take us yet. Um, you know, we're seeing the spikes occur now. We're seeing some of the things happening again. Um, you know, there's promises of a vaccine, but you know, we don't know. We could be, we could be in this situation for quite a period of time. And I think as Director Thomas mentioned during our budget retreat, you know, we look at the economic recovery that could take place probably as late as sometime in twenty twenty-two or even beyond. So we have to do our um our part as a city council as we get into this process and um make sure we're not only providing the the best budget for our appropriations authority, but also making sure, as I said earlier, that we have the sustainability for our city services because we can't operate a city without services. So we are, we're in that situation where uh, where uh, as I said, with COVID-nineteen, we're all in this together. So I appreciate your your time with this as we go forward and as we continue to go forward. And uh, we continue to move on as we go through this process. Okay, do we have any other discussion items tonight? Okay, I don't see anything. Do we have any new business to cover tonight? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Yes, I was trying to get my hand up. Uh, yeah, I wanted to find out uh if uh we were going to go forward with the uh civilian, uh, when I proposed several council study sessions to bring a uh civilian independent review board. And uh, the last time you spoke, you mentioned that you were going to have our attorney look at that to see how other cities or if other cities are doing it and bring it back to council. And I would like to find out if we were going to move forward on that.
Well, my-
An independent review board is what it is.
Yeah, my my plan of that, first of all, is uh to discuss this with the mayor. Um, setting up a one-on-one meeting with the mayor and have a discussion with that. Um, I I don't think we need the city attorney at this point in time, but I think we need to have further discussion with this. And my plan would be to bring this back to a study session probably sometime next month after I discuss this with the mayor and we get it on the agenda. And um, and and I'll keep everybody informed uh from that point on after our discussions.
Okay, thanks, Claude. Deputy Mayor.
That's okay. Mayor, please.
Uh, may I ask what type of independent review board you are talking about, Councilmember Trout Manuel?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Having us, uh, or you uh would be selecting civilians, people from the city to come in and do a a review over when there's an incident happen because I know that our police department does their internal reviews and have another uh, police department to come in and do it as well. And it would be nice, and I've been hearing that other cities have been doing this, and it's been brought up to my attention. And uh, so I would like to see if we would be interested in bringing it to the city of Auburn.
Okay, I think there needs to be more discussion and understanding of what some of the other cities are doing and um, if it makes sense for Auburn. So Deputy Mayor, you and I can can chat about that and-
Yes. Yeah, that was, that was my, my purpose first, again, to get a little more um internal discussion going. And then uh, before we bring it back to council, I'm sorry, councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I I've been along those lines and certainly it's something that um, you know, there, there are just, there, there are a number of different uh models and and actions, I suppose, that you know, cities can take. And then certainly, um, you know, the, there's, there's sort of a board that would be independent that would look at uses of force, you know, sort of, you know, like, like what we have with Valley um, incident team. But also what, you know, King County is is revamping old Office of Law Enforcement Oversight, OLEO. Um, so now that that office will have investigative and subpoena powers, um, which, which is good to see. Um, but that's something we we could, you know, we could do independently. But that's one area where there would be an independent um, role for for civilians perhaps. Uh, another is on the policy side. So that's more like what you would have in the city of Seattle with the Community Police Commission. There, they're not reviewing incidences or uses of force, but what they are doing is providing input to the police department and to the elected officials on how police um public policy is developed and used. So um, that, that, that's another important area. But anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, there are definitely a lot of important ideas out here. And uh, so I'm I'm really looking forward to the, you know, to discussing these further. And and certainly it's something that I'd like to consider down the road as part of our special focus area. Which is also another good area to look at too. So thank you.
Councilmember Langas raised her hand.
The customer rolling good.
Yes, I am also interested in what you guys find out about what the other cities are doing. I also brought this up as a follow-up action item at another meeting we had. So I'm excited to hear what the discussion ends up being. Thank you.
So council, uh, I again, as I could discuss this with the mayor, uh, my intent is to, with the mayor, is to put together um, how we would fashion this for a council study session. Uh, my first thought is we would do some methodology related to an exploratory process. Um, because there, as you've mentioned, councilmember Sterns, there's lots of models out there, lots of applications, how this is done. And part of this is going to be, does this make sense? Is it feasible for the city of Auburn? Um, what is the process we should follow in 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 putting this together? Um, you know, is it a board? Is it a commission? Is it a committee? All those different elements of this, you know, need to have some um, you know, some, some very vast and broad analysis uh, before we even get to a point of saying, yes, this is what we could or should do. So I I think this is going to be a fairly long process overall. But uh, you know, I asked for your patience a little bit so the mayor and I could discuss this and then bring some fashion of this back to a study session sometime in August.
Well, and if I might, um, Chief O'Neil and Commander Adams are already working on a police advisory board uh, working with members in the community. So this is probably I I I'm, I'm going to guess that this is going to accomplish a great deal of what you're already asking for.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Okay, council, any other new business? Okay, thank you everybody for your participation tonight. Thank you staff very much for your input tonight. And thank you, Mayor. And uh, everybody have a good evening and stay safe. Wear your mask. Good night. We are adjourned.